Be recorded and will be posted to the Henniker website. Unfortunately, I am required by law to read the following statement. So if everybody wants to go get a cocktail or something while I read this, it'll go a whole lot easier. Due to the COVID coronavirus crisis and accordance with the Governor Sununu's emergency order number 12, and pursuant to the executive order 202004, the Henniker Board of Selectmen is authorized to meet electronically. The town of Henniker will be utilizing the Zoom platform for this electronic meeting. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen to the meeting, which was authorized pursuant to Governor Sununu's emergency order number 12 pursuant to his executive order 202004. Only government can come up with this stuff, folks. I apologize. All members of the Board of Selectmen have the ability to communicate during this meeting through the Zoom platform, and the public has access to listen to and if necessary, participate in this meeting by following the link below or dialing the number below and entering the ID number at the prompt. For those of you on the home game, you can also use your chat function on the bottom of this, and Joe and Ortega will chime in with the question that you may have. You also may are connected to the Zoom website. You may also connect through the raise hand icon in the attendees section of Zoom to make the request. When the time is appropriate, you'll be recognized so you can provide your testimony. For those calling in who want to provide public testimony, dial star nine to alert the host that you wish to speak. The host will unmute you at the appropriate time and during the public hearing portion of the meeting. All participants, please keep your phones and computers on mute unless speaking. The website address is located on Henniker.org for those wanting to join the meeting. All right. Exhausted already. So with the pledge of allegiance done and I will entertain, gonna move the agenda around here a little bit, but I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Chris, there's a couple of items that you have to recuse yourself on within the consent agenda. Yep, and I've already spoken with the town administrator on some of my questions regarding the tax abatements or the lien list that the town clerk tax collector has prepared.
Okay, so will we approve, did you pull the items that you wanted from the consent agenda?
I believe they're the ones that were on the list that had been provided. Yep.
Did you want to keep and approve the items that remained in the consent agenda?
Yes.
Okay, is that in the form of a motion?
I'll make the motion to do that.
Is there a second to that? Seconded by Selectman Parker. Because this is a Zoom platform, we all need to answer in the affirmative, and we can't just say all those in favor, aye. So my vote is I will recuse myself due to the nature of the consent agenda. Vice Chair Hooper.
Yes.
Scott Osgood.
Yes.
Leon Parker. Peter Flynn.
You're on mute.
Gotta love Zoom.
Gotta be somebody doing it.
I know. Hey, I was guilty before, so I can't say anything. Peter, just give us a thumbs up. All right, we're good. All right, so moving on. Again, I'm gonna move the agenda around here a little bit, but at this point in time, is there anybody from the audience that wishes to address the board for public commentary on any items that are not currently on the agenda? If so, please make a note either through the text box or just kind of raise your hand or anything like that. I'm gonna give the ones that do not have their videos just a few more seconds to kind of chime in if they have any questions. Joe, are you seeing anything? Or Tia?
No, I'm not seeing anything.
Nothing here.
All right, well, very good. We will move along to a recognition thing here. And I know Officer Michael Martin, and I'm mad at you. I'm mad at you for resigning, retiring. Mike Martin was hired by Chief Tim Russell as a part-time officer in October of 2001, before being appointed as a full-time officer with Henniker in July of 2002. He had previously worked for the Bradford Police Department as a part-time officer. Officer Martin served as a patrol officer dutifully until 2015, when he was promoted to sergeant. And then again, he was promoted in July of 2020. Lieutenant Martin served as the department's accident reconstructionist, and he taught the DARE program at the Henniker Community School for 14 years. So some of those real little kids are now adults in town. In 2008, Officer Martin was awarded the New Hampshire Congressional Law Enforcement Award for his dedication and professionalism for intervening in a roadside assault that was occurring while he was an off-duty police officer in another community. He most likely saved the victim's life that day. I wasn't even aware of that, so. Lieutenant Martin has served the town of Henniker with honor and distinction for nearly 20 years of exemplary service. And as a board, I know that we can safely say we did not want to accept this retirement. And as a small token of our appreciation, so that you can always keep the time for Henniker, got a little Henniker right in there. We would like to present this to you electronically. This has not the effect we want. I'd sure love to shake your hand and all that good stuff, but in today's environment, this is gonna have to do. So on behalf of the board, we present this clock to you and the town administrator, and we thank you for your years of service and patronage, and if everybody could give him a nice little round of applause.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you. You will be very, very much missed and I didn't want to accept your retirement, so.
Yeah, I heard that.
None of the board members wanted to accept your retirement.
Well, that's very gracious. I appreciate it. It's been a heck of a run and and I've had a blessed career here, so I am looking forward to my next chapter, but I want to thank all the board members for the, and actually even the community members for all the citizens, for all the support. I really, truly appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Can you come in and do some part-time work on occasion?
Nice, Scotty. Try and recruit them.
I already been asked, God, the chief asked me that immediately, and I was, no, I'm waving the white flag. I worked my last weekend out of 21 years and as a police officer. I just finished it this past weekend, and I walked out on the Sunday and went, oh my gosh, this is my last Sunday. So thank you for that offer, but I'm going to respectfully decline.
Well, if you change your mind.
Joe, I gotta tell, I love the, I love the coat. Nicely done.
Thank you very much.
Hey, what about my sweater? I look pretty good, too.
Oh, that's dapper as well. Did you wear that just for me, Joe? Is that your normal attire?
This is just for you, Lieutenant.
I appreciate it. And thank you to my family and friends. Thank you. Hi, guys. Very nice.
Good stuff. Well, we're gonna miss you tremendously. We wish you nothing but success in your next chapter. And we're still gonna ask you every once in a while if you wanna have a shift to here.
Well, and the chief's been pretty regular. Almost every shift, he's asking if I've changed my mind, Chris, but I'm, I'm sticking to it. I'll come back and visit.
Good stuff.
All right.
Kudos.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'll bring the clock down to the town administrator. You can pick it up.
I appreciate that, Chris. Thanks.
All right. Good luck.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. On the agenda, next item up is item number four, which is the police cruiser RFP. For conflict of interest, I'm going to step down and mute myself, and I'm gonna turn this over to Tia Hooper.
So I will ask Joe Devine to give us some background and information.
Sure. I know Chief French is on the call as well. I just asked him to unmute just to kind of speak about this. But at the last board meeting, we spoke about authorizing us to move forward to purchase a new 2021 cruiser. The idea behind this was to offset our budget in 2021, because we're gonna have some funds left over in 2020, so this way we can remove it from the operating budget. The board gave us the authorization to do this. We had a little screw up, and we had, we had thought that Greponi had the state bid on it. They did not. So what we did was, we actually put it out to bid, so we could follow the procedures that the town had set up. So that being said, we received three bids. Hillsborough Ford was the low bidder at $33,303.30. Claremont Ford was $33,400. And Greponi Ford was $33,403. And speaking to Chief French, and I can let him elaborate a little bit more on, on the choice and how we wanted to move forward, but we kind of decided on moving forward. We recommended the board to move forward with the Greponi Ford bid. Chief, do you want to speak a little bit to that?
Sure. Basically, it just comes down to my feeling with the service that we got from Greponi. They have been fantastic with us. Anytime we've had an issue, they pretty much tell us, yep, bring the car down. Well, if we can't get to it today, we'll get to it tomorrow type of mentality. So that's why I'm asking that we just stick with them.
Are there any questions from board members?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, go ahead, Peter.
Chief, was that not the case at Hillsborough Ford, too? As far as taking your vehicle for service?
Yeah, I mean, it's not my intention to bash the facility there. That was the reason why I shied away from them to begin with, was I didn't feel service was really where it should be for what we were doing, what we were needing.
Okay.
Scott?
Yeah, Matt, was that a recent timeframe for, for the service issues? Or is it something that's, that's been going on for a while and even in the current status?
Yeah, it's been ongoing. I mean, most of our service over the last two years has been at, for any Ford service, has been at Greponi Ford.
So you haven't used Hillsborough at all in a couple of years?
No.
Are there any other questions from the board? Leon.
Thank the observation that the owner of Hillsborough Ford made a very persuasive argument for doing business with them, and they came in with the lowest bid, so I got a problem with this one. I guess with the question to Matt, what have you done to try to deal with the service issues you had? Or I guess you haven't had any recently, or your reaction is based on issues from a while ago?
Correct. Yep. I, I had a conversation with one of the owners over there. It didn't go very well. And that's why I moved to Greponi Ford.
And Matt, do you, can you tell us what timeframe that was?
I'm guessing it was two years ago.
So when you purchased one of the last cruisers?
Correct.
We've had, the, the ownership of Hillsborough Ford resides in, in Henniker. And I believe we've been told they, they pay an extreme amount of dollars for taxes. And I was really weighing strongly on that, too, but I'm still thinking. I'm not sure where I'm going with this either.
Well, and it's in the board's purview to not accept the low bid if that's what the board decides to do.
I realize that.
Scott?
Yeah, Matt, well, we're having the fact that Hillsborough Ford is half the distance from Henniker than Concord is. Wouldn't that be a benefit if, if you were, had a, had a closer service department?
Absolutely. Yep. I'm trying not to dodge the, any of your, any of your questions, but at the same time, I'm trying not to sound like a jerk and, and bash Hillsborough Ford in a public setting like this.
What is the board, what would the board like to do?
I, I would say that there's benefits to stay with Hillsborough Ford, a couple of them. And if it doesn't work out, then we'll, we'll learn a lesson.
There's really not much difference between, or the, the cost difference, Hillsborough Ford comes in with the best cost. You could buy the vehicle, we could buy the vehicle from Hillsborough Ford, and if you have another run-in with the service department, you can just take out the Greponis and they'll service it.
I think that's a good argument, Leo, Leon. Nobody says you have to take the service from the dealer that you bought the car from. I think Matt's concern was not the purchase, it was more the service. He can, we can, we could award the bid to Hillsborough, and then Matt could take the car down to Greponi anytime he needs service. And everything is covered under the warranty that Hillsborough would have provided.
It's been two or three years since whatever incident was a problem. Give another chance. And tell them you're coming to give them a chance. They're either gonna give you good service, or you're gonna go somewhere else.
Is there a motion?
I'd make a motion to buy the, the cruiser from Hillsborough Ford.
Second.
Okay, so we're gonna have to take a roll, roll call vote. Chris is recused from this item. So Scott?
As I said, I would choose Hillsborough Ford.
Peter?
Yes.
Leon?
Same, Ben, I, yes.
And I'm actually going to be opposed. I'll, I actually support the chief's argument, so. So that's gonna be three to one. And then Chris can come back and share the rest of the meeting.
Great. Thank you, Vice Chair Hooper, for handling that issue. Next up on the agenda is item number five, update from public safety meeting. Joe?
I'm actually, Chief French, while he's here, we're gonna let him handle this. He is the chairman of the Public Safety Committee, or the Highway Safety, so we'll let him go in, go with it. Chief?
You muted me. There we go. Um, I don't have any of the document in front of me.
I'll run with it then. That's fine.
Okay. I didn't know I was gonna do it.
So the Highway Safety Committee met on December 9th, and the following items were voted upon and for consideration, and some were for referral to the select board. So I'm just gonna go line by line on the different items. Some of the items are gonna need a select board approval to move forward, and then other items are more for talking points, consideration, and possibly moving forward at a later date. So the first one is a speed limit on Ridgetop. This was a housekeeping item. The street was not listed on the streets that they addressed two years ago. The Highway Safety Committee voted in favor of making it 25 miles per hour to be consistent with the rest of the town. Kaiser Pond Jake Brake Noise. Eric Leonard, the owner of Kaiser Pond Campground, requested a posting in the area stating basically no Jake brakes. A motion was made by Rocky to request the town reach out to the businesses in the area and attempt to have them police themselves. The Highway Safety, they voted all in favor of this. Traffic Triangle at Huntington and Quaker. This discussion was with Marty Davis, was strongly against the removal of the triangle for various reasons. Lisa Spall also sent an email against the removal. Tisha Blank sent in an email as well against the removal of the triangle. The road agent would like to replace it and remove it with a T intersection. The board voted to pass this on to the BOS at the request of the road agent. Traffic Triangle at River Road and Shaker Road. Again, they, same thing, they voted just to push it on to the BOS. River Road, local traffic only. This came up with traffic going to Pat's Peak. The board voted in majority to enact a sign on our end of River Road stating local traffic only. This is in cooperation with Hopkinton doing it on their side as well. You know, I think the, the big idea with this, and Chief, you can correct me, is, is the bus traffic that comes through on River Road. There's a lot of it, and that seems to be one of the major complaints. And speaking to the road agent, road agent as well, obviously this takes a lot of wear and tear on the road, having the traffic go over the way it is. Hall Lab, yes.
Does that mean that our police, or the, the Hopkinton police can stop those buses and find them?
That would give them the authority to do that, yes.
Okay.
Hall Lab, no through trucking. This was a
Joe, I think you had a question from Leon.
Okay.
One of the other observations was if we make that local traffic only, that the GPS folks can take it off the, it might take years to do that, but it's worth trying.
That, that's correct. Thank you. With, once that's posted, the road agent in Henniker and same thing in Hopkinton, we can reach out two ways, Google, Apple, and let them know that it's local traffic only, and they'll rewrote the GPSs, so they're not going down River Road anymore. I'm assuming it's gonna take them up 114 to get to the peak, so. Hall Lab, no through trucking above Aaron Goss. This was a split committee request. They kind of wanted to move forward, have Aaron Goss notify their users not to use Hall Lab for access as opposed to installing a no-through trucking sign. Crosswalk on Main Street. The committee majority voted in favor of the crosswalk in the beginning. After we've had more discussions about this, though, I think, I don't think everybody is on the same page at this point. The reason, they suggested obviously that there'd be a design change, maybe use yellow or green so it better stands out, so the crosswalks are more visible. The concern that's come up now, after researching this a little bit more, is by doing this, we're gonna be eliminating some of our parking spaces downtown. And we don't wanna, we, we have limited parking as it is right now, and to start taking parking spots away is a concern. And the other concern is we'd have to make this crosswalk ADA compliance. It means we're gonna have to be putting in new curb cuts into our sidewalks in order to make the ADA compliance. So I, I think, I don't wanna speak for the Highway Safety Committee, but I think they wanna look at it a little bit more or have somebody look at it, because we're not in a, prepared to make that recommendation. And the final item was the 15-minute parking that came out of the last board meeting. The board is in favor of 15-minute parking. I think logistically, as a town, though, we need to look a little bit better at how we're gonna do it. There was, there was conversations about allowing them to put their own signs out. I personally, as, as the administrator, don't think that's a good idea. I think we need to really look at how we wanna do that, you know? I don't know if we wanna be, have some, I suggested during the committee meeting, maybe look at every one in 10 spots. We make a 15-minute spot, so there's some sort of consistency to it. But, but having the ability just to put a sidewalk sign out there that says 15-minute parking. Number one, if the police department does need to enforce it, I think we're gonna have an enforcement issue for them. And two, you know, if I'm parking in the downtown and I see a parking spot yesterday, there was 15 minutes, and because that spot wasn't there today, having the business, having the ability to then put it on another spot, I think it's gonna get way too confusing in our downtown. People aren't gonna know what the 15-minute spots are or aren't. I think the committee as a whole was definitely in favor of the 15-minute spots. I just think we need to really look at it and how we're gonna do it. A couple other, what, Chairman, do you want my comments now, or would you like?
Well, I've got your comments here on the report, so I'm wondering if the board wants to circle back up to bullet item number one and just go down through these, and we'll get the board's input as well as Joe's. What's the board's flavor?
Yeah, go by, I'd say go by each.
All right, so if you're done with your presentation, we'll circle back up to the top.
Sounds good.
Okay. First item is the speed limit Ridgetop, housekeeping item. Voted in favor of making it 25 miles per hour.
I'm in favor of that.
Is that a common speed limit we have in our town?
Yes, it is.
Okay. I'll approve it then.
Leon, Peter?
Yeah.
Okay, Joe, your comments?
Yeah, I, it's a housekeeping item. I can throw it.
Chief, do you wanna input on each one of these as well, since it affects your area?
I mean, in this case, this was part of, I think it was two years ago when we came before the board with, with the whole list of streets that we redid and rena, redid the speed limits and stuff. Some reason Ridgetop fell through the cracks and was never named on that list. So we're just looking to come back, back around and, and make it what it should be at the 25, as we did with most of every other cul-de-sac neighborhood.
Sounds like the board is in agreement on this. Does anybody wanna put it in the form of a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve that we change the speed limit on Ridgetop to 25 miles per hour.
There a second?
Second.
Seconded by Scott Osgood. Made by Chair, Vice Chair Hooper, seconded by Scott Osgood. Roll call vote. Chris, yes. Right, Hooper?
Yes.
Leon?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries five, nothing. Next up on the agenda is the Kaiser Pond Jake Brake Noise. We heard from the owner of Kaiser Pond through the committee that no Jake Brake use. How does the board feel on this?
I'll make a motion to have the town administrator contact the, the businesses within that area to have the conversation about the Jake Brake issue.
There a second to that motion? I'll second it for the purposes of the discussion. I, too, have concerns about the removal of a Jake Brake in a heavy industrial area. I would like to get input from those that would be affected by this ruling. I don't know how other members of the board feel. Scott?
Agree.
Yeah, I just wonder, is it coming down 114 or is it going down Old Concord Road if they're using the brakes? Because Concord Road's pretty flat. I don't see where
Well, I think it's coming out of that area as far as, you know, coming into downtown as well. Is that correct, Matt?
No, his complaint was Old Concord Road by the, by Kaiser Pond Campground. Basically, from where the pond that's close to the road, where it starts to open up there by the campground, down through that flat.
I guess we can open up the discussion, you know, through the town administrator about the issue that's being experienced.
Chief, do you back that rule?
What do you mean, the Jake Brake?
Do, do you support removal of Jake brakes for that area?
Honestly, I don't know enough about Jake brakes and how they work. I tried to educate myself on it. I talked to a couple of the different truckers and guys that run trucks, and I think that's why we decided that it should just maybe go to, back to the businesses and just ask them, maybe limit the use. Pretty slow through there, so maybe they don't need them. But again, I, I think they kind of side with what you said. I'm not, I'm not a trucker, so I don't really know.
Okay, let's go with Leon then Scott. Leon?
This is one of those issues that probably isn't enforceable anyway.
Right.
And the issue really is on Old Concord Road and 114, where people are coming down the hill and wanna stop and swing in, or, you know, they park beside the road out there, and they're slowing down and using the Jake Brake. I think, you know, the the business of putting a sign out that says no Jake Brake use, you know, you might as well put it in my backyard.
Yeah, well, but that's not what the committee has voted on. They voted to have the town reach out to the businesses in the area. You know, to start the conversation.
I'm responding to what was asked, and I agree that, you know, we make an effort to talk to the business owners and say, hey, tell your drivers to cool it with the Jake Brake as they get down to stop to go, park illegally beside the road and go get their cop. But that's as far as I think we ought to go.
Okay, Scott?
Yeah, the other thing, too, might be by the time they get there, they're gonna be in Hopkinton. Then what are you gonna do?
All right, so we have a motion that was made by Selectman Hooper and seconded by myself to push this issue back towards, I guess we would be through this highway subcommittee to address the owners of the businesses on that road?
Well, I, I made the motion to have Joe Devine, our town administrator, reach out to them.
Okay, Joe, you have your hand up.
I believe the road agent wants to weigh in on this. He's been unmuted. So. Leo?
Well, go ahead. You can keep on hammering it out. It's wonderful.
You're doing a good job. There's nothing wrong with Jake Brakes. They save lives. All right, that's all there is to it. Yeah, it's unfortunate, but the unfortunate part is when they put that, that traffic circle down on 2029, he hasn't heard what a Jake Brake really sounds like until they do that. So, you know, a little bit of usage just being used by his, by his property is minimal. And, you know, in, in, in my line of business, we use our Jake Brakes all the time. It, it, it reduces the wear and tear, the heat buildup on our brakes. And, and it it's unfortunate that his facility is in the middle of a, of a, of a heavy commercial district, but it is where it is. But, you know, I, I can't, I can't, I can't honestly tell you that you can put signs out, you can tell, you can ask the, the business owners to, to reduce, but I, I don't see it's going to happen. If anything, I think it'll probably only make it worse. But it's, it's, it's a major safety, it's a major safety feature on all our trucks. All our trucks, all the town trucks are equipped with engine brakes because it reduces heat on the brakes and allows us to stop on a timely fashion. I, I, you know, I just don't think that, you know, that this, this is helping you out a bit. You're, you're, you're fighting an uphill battle. But go ahead, do whatever you got to do.
Leo, with the road, to the chief's point about it being so flat there, do you think Jake Brakes are still needed?
Well, th- these guys are pulling across there at 100,000 pounds. Chris, you know, and there are downslopes. I mean, you, you, you come, the, the, yeah, there's, there's corners, there's downslopes, I mean, every I turn mine on when I leave the shop in the morning. And, you know, it comes on, it comes off. The only time I, you know, the only time I'm actually, you know, I, I'm very dependent upon it for overspeed, and that's what a lot of it is, is overspeed protection, because it keeps you, keeps you from over, you know, over revving. And I just, I, I, I know, I'm a, I've been doing this for all my life, and I'm a firm believer in them. But I, and I do know, I mean, there's, there's worse areas in town. You know, Marshall Corner, you know, coming down off that hill, off the cemeteries, coming down over and into, into town, they, they ride those brakes all the way down. Coming down Main Street and Hennecker, they ride their Jake Brake all the way down Main Street. I mean, all the way down Main Street. There's multiple houses up and down Main Street. And do we, do we hear any complaints off of Main Street? This is a commercial district, Chris. I'm sorry, but it's, it's, it's where our trucks are expected to be.
Yep.
So I, no, I, I guess I, I don't, regardless of whether or not it's flat, uphill, downhill, there's a downhill bend, you know, we lost, we lost a salt truck right in that hollow right in front of his, his, his complex one year. Dumped it right off. He applied his brakes and he fell right off the side of the road and dumped this whole load of salt right in the brook. Could that have been prevented with an engine brake? I don't know, but, you know, it, it's, the, the road rolls back and forth through there. It's not flat. It's not flat at all, and it's, and it is windy. So no, I, I think that they're, they're needed and, and a very helpful tool for those trucks.
Very good. Okay, thank you. So we have a motion made by Selectman Hooper to, if I understand, the wording of your motion was to remand it back to the Highway Subcommittee for them to interview the business owners?
No, so my motion was to have the town administrator start the conversation with the businesses, and I think it would come best from the town administrator just to start a dialogue with the businesses.
Okay. Still support that motion. I think that's a good idea. Are we ready to call the roll call vote, or is there any other commentary on this? All those, I can't. In favor of Tia's motion, Vice Chair Hooper?
Yes.
Leon?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Okay, Joe, I think you got your marching orders on that one.
Sounds good.
All right, thank you very much. Next up is the traffic triangle in Huntington in the Quaker District. What, how do we want to proceed on this one?
So I'm, I'm going to make a motion that we wait for the Highway Superintendent to, I know that he is working on gathering some information and would like to come back to the board, so maybe we have the Highway Superintendent go back to the Highway Safety Committee to speak about, you know, what the findings are in that research. This is not, these are not just the only two that have come up in conversations even with the Road Management Committee, so I think we need to leave it with the Highway Superintendent for now.
So do you want to just make a motion to table?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second to that?
Yes.
Motion made by Vice Chair Hooper, seconded by Selectman Parker to table for the discussion before we call the roll call vote.
I, I would just as soon leave it the way it is.
Meaning not to take the triangles out?
That's correct. Leave it the way it is. It's been working for many, many centuries, or many decades probably, but I don't think it's worth the effort to try to change it, and I think it's a feature that should stay there.
Okay, let's, we'll restrict conversation since it seems like everybody, we're going to table it, and ready to call the roll call vote? Any other comment? All those in favor of tabling? Chris, yes. Vice Chair Hooper?
Yes.
Selectman Parker?
Yes.
Selectman Osgood?
Nope.
Selectman Flynn?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries four, one. All right, next up is River Road Local Traffic.
Yeah.
Just thought of it as a precaution, I'm gonna
Recuse yourself? Okay, so I'll, I'll open up for conversation amongst the board on what you would like to do. I, I don't have an issue with this. Go ahead, Leon.
I will, we concur with the recommendation to have it posted as a private road.
Is there a second to that?
Were we going to do a private road?
Well, to concur with
Local traffic only.
Yeah.
Local, okay, yeah.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion, any questions, comments from the board?
Yes. Yes, when you say local traffic, does that mean I couldn't drive over River Roads? You're not specifying buses or trucks. It says local traffic. In other words, local traffic to me means you really should live on that road to travel it. That's what it usually means. The other thing I have to mention is about 10 years ago, I met with the Chief of Police in Hopkinton, the exact same issue, this comes up every couple of years. The Chief of Police in Hopkinton was very, very much against it at the time, and the Hennecker Selectmen were for it, and we came back and reported that, and then it kind of died, so I, there is a little history on that before.
Well, Peter, was that with Chief Willer, or is that with Chief Procora?
I'm not sure who it was. I think it's the one that's there now. So anyway, local traffic, I think we, I think it should be, you know, specified more than just saying local traffic. Trucking traffic and
No. Usually it just says local traffic only. If you start picking, like, we're going to have like 17 signs out there if we, you know, start targeting. So if you have questions, if you should be out there, then you probably shouldn't be out there. Right?
I guess so, but it's not going to be, I, I think we're going to have problems there trying to enforce that and monitor.
I think one of the major reasons we're looking to do the local traffic is to get it off of the GPS routes. Because the GPS takes it down River Road. And this is a mechanism. We can't just tell the GPS, oh, you can't use River Road anymore. So this, putting that signage up gives us that ability. I haven't spoken to the police chief in Hopkinton. I have spoken to the town administrator there, who is in favor, and their board is also in favor of doing the same thing on their side, I can tell you that.
That's what I'm going to make, Peter. Apparently, based on the discussion in the, in the Highway Safety Committee meeting, we're talking about Hopkinton and Hennecker doing it at the same time. So that because it's required to cover the whole road to get it off the
Chief French, you had a comment?
And I don't want to nitpick on the, on the verbiage, but what about a no-through traffic or, or some other variant of the verbiage, so it's not as targeted as Peter was concerned about?
I think, well, I think local traffic only is the right way to go.
Yep.
I, I personally consider somebody traveling in Hennecker, from Hennecker, local traffic. That's how I view this.
Yeah.
Scott?
Yeah, you know, I think there's benefits too for Hopkinton. I mean, you know, with the larger vehicles being out there, the Hopkinton Road is just going to get beat up. And then, you know, it won't last as long if, if they allow that. Plus two, and I agree that it's okay to call it the local traffic, because it's the local folks that, that, that will be using it, you know, for other reasons other than that. But it's the out of state is that we'll also be doing the damage and the congestion, and they won't be the local traffic, and so I think it pays to do that.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor that's been seconded to go with the recommendation to post local traffic only. Is there any further discussion from the board?
Well, we need to find out if Hopkinton's going to go with us.
Hopkinton already said that they're supportive, or the board's supportive.
Very good.
So we'll do a roll call vote. Leon?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Myself, yes. And Chris is recused.
Okay, thank you. Next up is Hall Ave, no through trucking above Aaron Goss. Split the committee right in two. How does the board wish to proceed on this one? Scott?
Yeah, I would absolutely have no trucking through that. I mean, it's a residential neighborhood, you know, and there's no need for them to go past Aaron Goss.
Do we have any input on how Aaron Goss feels about this? Leon?
I was going to make the point. Aaron Goss needs to have access for trucks to get to their pumps. Putting the sign where it was recommended to be above Aaron Goss's and cutting out through trucks coming up and down through there is really only going to discomfort or cause a problem to people who are coming down there to get fuel, and my understanding is truck traffic that's an annoyance is traffic that's using that to bypass the square. And I think in the committee discussion, in the discussion wasn't really conclusive. And I think that we've had some more thoughts about it since then. But I'm in favor of a sign above Aaron Goss's partly because that's where White Birch Community Center is with kids and seniors, as well as all the residential rest of the street above there. And somebody coming to Aaron Goss for fuel, come down through the square and still get there without violating that rule.
I'd be curious if anybody could give us the Cliff Notes version of why the committee was split on this.
I believe our Highway Superintendent's trying to chime in. Go ahead, Leo.
Chris, it was, this was brought up to me by the few community members up on Hall Ave that truck traffic has increased. In the past, Skip McKean would patrol that district for us. He would tell his customers not to use Hall Ave as a hall road to get to his filling station, to come up Western Ave, onto Hall Street, fill up, and, and then leave using Hall Street to Western Ave. This has now changed, and there's nobody policing it anymore. I have trucks at seven o'clock in the morning pulling out of, of Aaron Goss, driving trucks completely up the post office and, and turning out on the highway to avoid traffic in the downtown district. There's no need to this. All right, this is a residential facility. I'm typically a west side owner anyways. But I also have to have a little bit of a hat to a residential community that has not had this up with the video having
Hey, Lee, Leo?
Yeah.
You're all digitized. Is, can you perhaps hang up and try calling back in? I don't think we caught your last 60 seconds of that conversation. Joe, can you let him back in when he calls back in?
Not a problem.
Further discussion? No.
No.
Horrible. Hang up the phone and reconnect. Further discussion from the board level right now? Chief, how do you feel about this one?
I really hate to pass the buck, but I really defer to the road agent. I mean, he's the one that had the complaint. You know, the issues that came up in the meeting are, we really need to, to post another regulation in town and try and enforce it. And then defining what is considered truck traffic when they should be going through and when they shouldn't. That's really where the split came in. So I, I think the porto was that maybe we could get Aaron Goss to maybe go back. I remember the sign used to be right on the pumps. Don't use Hall Avenue. I mean, it was, I mean, it was, there was more language to it, but essentially that's what it was. So maybe we just need to poke that a little bit and get it to come back.
Do you think the traffic has actually increased for trucking on Hall Ave?
I don't think we have a feel for that at all.
Yeah.
But I don't, I wouldn't even dare say.
Okay, Selectman Osgood?
You're muted, Scott.
Sorry about that. So would it make sense for us to go to the owners and tell them that that's, that's what we would like to see happen? And put up the signs as well?
I, I like that idea, Scott.
Yeah, I like that idea as well. Joe, is Leo back?
Is not back yet.
Okay, so do we want to, I can't, I don't remember where we're at with this. Do we have a motion on the table?
No, we do not.
Okay, do we want to just table this issue and have Joe approach the owners of Aaron Goss and say, could you put some signage up that says, please don't use Hall Ave?
Let's make a consensus to have him do that.
Okay, you go. All good?
Yeah, and then we'll reconvene at the next meeting. On this topic.
Leon?
The thing I wanted to stick in on the discussion is the examples of truck traffic that I heard weren't people that were going to Aaron Goss for fuel necessarily. They were
Right.
coming down Maple Street or coming down Bradford, from Bradford, and heading out Western Avenue, and it was just easier to come to Hall Avenue. I, you know, maybe we'll get most of the traffic if, if we get agreement by the new owners of Aaron Goss. It's worth trying.
Okay, so do we have to do a roll call and a consensus, or?
No.
Nope.
Okay. All right, so you're clear on that, Joe?
Yes, sir.
Great, thank you very much. Your jacket is very stylish tonight, by the way. It's very stylish.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Sparkles, the lights hit it just so, and perfect. Next up is Crosswalk on Main Street. Committee majority voted in favor, and then I guess there was some second thoughts to that.
Yeah, knowing that, knowing that we're going to have to cut into the sidewalk and make some changes for ADA compliance, and then also the removal of, you know, at least two parking spaces when we're already struggling for parking anyway, I, I think we need to rethink this.
Correct.
Where specifically are they, Tia?
What, so what they're trying to do is have a crosswalk that goes near your house or near the community park across the street, which means we'd have to take out two spaces right there in front of the ice cream store, and they're already limited on parking anyway, so I think we need to come up with a different strategy at this point. People are going to cross there regardless. It is so.
Isn't there a crosswalk like 50 feet from there, 75 feet?
There's one up near Daniels. You know, where the administrative parking lot is, and I can't remember if there's one below. I believe there's one further below near Cogswell House.
Uh, actually, it's right at the corner of Crescent Street.
Okay. Uh, what's the board's pleasure?
Rather than tabling it or moving it around with something, I'd rather just take the position against it. To do it because of the cost, there's, there's no way that a crosswalk is worth two parking spaces in that area of town from my point of view. So I would move, I would move that we vote against the installation of a sidewalk of a crosswalk.
I'll second it.
And and just additional comment. There's lighting involved as well as ADA compliance of the sidewalk and the parking spaces.
Correct. So what is the board's pleasure? Do we want to?
Let's hand up.
Joe, I'm sorry, I didn't see it.
Uh, the road agent is back and would like to comment.
Okay, is this on the crosswalk?
I I'm assuming he's texting me asking if he can comment, so.
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead, Leo.
Hold on.
Uh, I I'm beyond you. I just probably got back on. Go ahead and continue with the sidewalk.
Uh, well, we're ready to kind of, do you want to offer any input on it before we make a motion on it?
Well, my point would be that I told Joe is that if you, if you, right now, the current standards are 20 feet either side of that sidewalk uh, for parking spaces and the federal government wants to update that to 30 feet. So before you, you know, consider you're going to lose some parking spaces down there.
Okay, so I think you do not support doing the crosswalk?
Uh, no, I don't.
Okay. How do we want to go on this? Would somebody want to make a motion?
So Leon's already made a motion and I've seconded that motion not, not to approve the sidewalk.
Very good. Okay, roll call vote. Chris, I agree.
Tia, yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Leon?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Okay. Five nothing. Very good. Okay, anything else on the Highway Safety Committee, Joe?
Uh, the one thing that it looks like it's on the report, but I did mention is the 15 minute parking.
Yeah, I think we need to defer that to the town administrator to look at how to make it consistent and then come back with a recommendation.
I'll agree with that. We good by consensus on that?
Good with me.
Yeah.
Okay, Leon, Peter?
Yes.
Okay, anything else on item five from the board? Okay. Moving along to item number six, Depot Hill Circle Street Drainage Design. Is this going to be Leo or Joe speaking about this?
I can take it or Leo. Leo, do you want it? You want me to take it?
Oh, I'll grab it. Um, what we got is Meg McNally gave us a price for doing the, um, preliminary, uh, not only preliminary, but, um, baseline design for drainage for mainly Circle Street but up Depot Street as well. To, uh, we're going to under drain, we're going to, uh, or or plum the, um, the drains underground uh, with storm drains up through in order to maintain water flow and and prevent erosion. Uh, and ice buildup on the roads and this water will then flow. We're working with AGS Services and, uh, to gain easement to, um, flow to the back culvert that crosses down for the river, uh, behind their facility. So, um, I think that it's appropriate that this be designed and implemented as designed.
Got it. So to be clear, this is where the little railroad station is up to the toe of the slope for Depot Hill?
Uh, we'll go probably up about, um, I would say a couple thousand feet up Depot and then it would come, it would carry, um, up, uh, to Circle Street. A lot of water problems, issues that we're having on Depot is coming off of Circle Street where the water sheds off the ball, ball field and, uh, runs down across Circle Street then down Depot and and is causing the road to deteriorate quite quick, quickly.
Alright.
Leon, you have.
So there'll be, um, in that process, there'll be some, some sidewalk repair. Um, obviously several storm drains installed, three of which on, three of which on, on Circle Street. And then two at the very low point of, um, of Depot Street. And then a few more up Depot Street picking up the water flow as it comes downhill.
Leon.
Leon.
Believe that we have a a proposal from engineer and we probably, if we're interested in approving this, ought to include a dollar figure in our approval for his work, shouldn't we?
Yeah, so, yeah, so it's 14,600 is the dollar amount that is currently in the staff report for the engineering services.
I believe that we approve that amount for the design of the drainage as described.
I'll second it.
Now, we have a motion by Selectman Parker, seconded by Selectman Hooper. Is there any further discussion on this?
This is for Mike's, uh, contract?
Yeah, this is for engineering services. This, um, also coordinates with some long-term road project strategies that are coming up.
I'll prove it.
Any other comment? Ready to call the vote? Roll call vote, Chris, yes.
Tia, yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Leon?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Motion carries five nothing. Thank you very much. Next up is item seven, warrant for new dump truck. Leo?
Yes, um, we're, the highway department is currently looking at retiring the, um, water tanker, uh, not the tanker portion, but the actual chassis, which is a 80, a either 83, 84 GMC top kick. Um, the changes that we're going to be making is we'll be pulling, uh, so we'll be, we'll be relinquishing that machine, that truck to White's Farm. And then, uh, taking its place will be our, our yellow freight liner, all wheel drive, uh, automatic transmission, which will hopefully, um, serve not only as a tanker for highway, but also as a potential, uh, tanker for forestry. Uh, because of the all-wheel drive op option, uh, not, I'm not speaking in their behalf, but it's available to them. The pumps will be there, the truck will be available, it'll be an automatic. The replacement of the yellow freight liner will be a new, uh, 10-wheeler. To, um, be a full-time truck for our department. And during the winter months, that truck, the yellow freight liner will then be re-equipped with its sanding body and its plow fixture to be a secondary plow truck for the highway department, uh, in the event that we have breakdowns, which we have quite frequently.
Yeah, so, so the estimated cost of a new truck is approximately 250,000, um, based on the estimated budget, uh, amounts remaining. We're estimating approximately 150,000 from the highway department or 125,000, which would then be rolled over into the unreserved fund balance. And leave it, if we were to use 150,000 from that unreserved fund balance, it would only leave 100,000 for, um, for us to raise for as taxation at the next upcoming, um, town meeting.
Some good mathematics going on here. Uh, Peter?
Yes, Tia, um, I think we have to go, uh, put a warrant article together to, uh, with that money from the fund balance, wouldn't we?
Yep, so, um, we, and we've done this in the past for other prior equipment that, um, you know, that's come up. So the language is already there, but, um, in order to make sure that the financial director is aware um, and can provide us with, um, up-to-date balances, uh, before any funds are moved from any of the department accounts. I think we need to move forward with authorizing the transfer of the remaining monies as a close of this year from the highway budget, whatever goes into that general fund, to be then used to offset the cost of the new dump truck at the 2021 town meeting.
Can you tell me what the capital reserve is for the highway department?
Yep, so with interest, it's a little over $29,000.
And how much are we allocating annually to that, Joe?
So last year you only contributed 25,000, um, when the CIP recommended $100,000.
Joe, am I correct that we have $97,000 fire budget, uh, payment coming off the books this year?
We do. We have a debt service coming off of the fire truck.
Yeah, and I would also like to point out CIP is continuing to work on trying to figure out how to fund the highway department because we have not funded it at the levels that we need to in order to keep up with the purchase of the equipment that is coming due. Year after year, you're finding a shortfall, so hopefully we'll be able to figure that out to provide the planning board along with the Board of Selectmen a course of action on how to do that. However, you are still short for the next 10 years on funding the highway department. So, um, I highly recommend not touching that capital reserve to fund any of this expense.
I also note that we have been painstakingly rebuilding the capital reserve fund and have established about between eight and 10 of them and are starting to fund them very aggressively. Uh, I do not necessarily argue against that we need this truck. I'm not 100% comfortable how it's being proposed to be financed, to be perfectly honest.
Well, it's, it's not being proposed to be financed. This is not a finance option.
I mean, how they're proposing to buy it.
Well, I.
Borrowing from Peter to pay.
No, so here's the thing, this money is already sitting there currently in their operating budget. Instead of having it roll over into the unreserved fund balance, right? We're going to be using that money, which would be offsetting the taxes anyway, if you threw up 250,000 like we have done in the past to offset that cost. This would be done in a similar manner, except it would be strictly done with the funds that were used leftover from the highway department operating budget that would be going back. And through this motion, also I'll be making a follow-up motion for all of the departments to have a, before any money is moved into that unreserved fund balance, to have the finance director provide us with that information so we can have a clear, um, accounting line by line of where the money's coming from.
Is this truck currently, go ahead, Peter?
Yes, I was going to say, um, in honor to use the money, which is now in the account and we do have it right now, part of it. I think we have to take action as a board to encumber that.
Correct.
Send it next year and then tie that in with a warrant article of, um, you know, the, uh, using fund balance. It's a little tricky.
Yeah, I think.
DRA is going to have to get involved in how to word that.
Well, but Peter, the, you're absolutely correct, but we, we use the same wording, uh, two years ago when we bought the excavator. We, we, we pulled excess money out of the unreserved fund balance and applied it directly to the purchase of the excavator to offset what we needed in order to, to raise and appropriate. So if you look at the, the, um, the, 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 uh, the warrant for the excavator two years ago, you're going to find that the same wording you're looking for and how, how it came about. The money has to leave my account and be returned to the unreserved fund balance in the, at the end of the, at the end of the day on December, on, on the end of December. That's fine, but what I'm asking is that, wh- what I was kind of challenged with earlier in the month was whether or not to buy a new pickup truck with what was left in my fund. And I said, the, the highway department can make do with the pickup truck that we have now and the old one that we currently run. What I'm asking for is something that I feel the department will do well with is, is another frontline plow truck, updated and, and that way I said, I, 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 I did not accept, I did not take the option of buying anything further. I said furthermore, I already received a truck this year. This will be going into 2021 process, but the money, what I'm, what, what I'm putting forth is that that money that I, that I did not spend out of my, out of my department, which I wouldn't spend anyways, whether or not I was going to, because I don't need it. What I'm looking for is a new dump truck, um, which I do believe the department does need. And I think that, that the, the verbiage is there, we just got to go back in the books and pick it back up and bring it forward. And, um,
I think that's what you're saying.
And then go and then do the rest, either be a bond or borrow it or, or raise it by taxation.
Okay.
Is this truck currently not working?
So the.
No.
Right, can, can I get an answer from Leo, please?
No, all my trucks are working. All my trucks work.
The 1984 has had mechanical issues though, um, which, you know, what did you say, Leo, at our RMC meeting on the current mechanical for the 1984?
Excuse me?
What did you say about the current mechanical issues you're experiencing with the 1984?
The 84, um, uh, the, the rear, the, the rear drive, uh, we've already lost the, the, um, the high and low, the high and low gear in it were limited to, uh, one range. The, the, the truck is, has got quite a bit of rust underneath it. They used to run liquid calcium chloride through that truck. So you can imagine the amount of rust underneath the frame, but the tank on it is solid. And my, what, what I'm trying to do is, 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 is purpose one truck to do two, two purpose, multi-purpose a truck. So instead of having one truck that just does water only, this truck will be in the, in the spring, we'll have it, we'll have the dump body removed from it and the tanker truck and the tank put on it. And in the fall, have the tank, the, the tank removed and have the dump body slid back into position. The multi-purpose sanding body put, put back in position and equipped with its plow frames again. And in the event of a heavy storm, we'll be, we, we will have a spare dump with a sanding capabilities to be able to pick up when a truck goes down instead of having to bring the mechanic back to the garage to try to get a, a repair done.
Leo, in your professional opinion, I've seen you make trucks go 300, 400,000 miles. Could you squeeze another year out of this truck and allow the board to repair the capital replacement budget for the highway department? It's our, I, I don't want to speak for the board, but my proposal would be to take the current payment that we're doing for the highway, for the fire truck that's now retired, allocate those monies and beef up the highway.
Chris, you're still not.
Chris, as you well know, I, I can pull off about anything you ask me to do. The problem is, is that then I, it backs up a whole line of equipment that I got moving forward solely going up that same, going up that same chain that, you know, last night we had the same meeting, um, with the highway, um, road management committee of how I can push trucks back and forth. And I'm, I'm already moving that line. But I have a pickup truck, an old six pickup truck. I have an old five 10-wheeler. I've got an old six, um, uh, freight liner. Um, these, these trucks are slowly deteriorating. I'm doing, today we spent the entire day pressure washing, washing and, and undercoating all our trucks for the salt season and making sure we try to do the best we can to make things last longer. And, and I'm pushing this line off, but I, this, this particular truck is getting, is getting, is getting weaker over the time. And I think needs to be pulled out of the frontline snow fighter and turned to a secondary. But it's obviously, it's very much up to this board to make those decisions. I can only give you the information that you need to make, you know, the right decisions. And, 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 I mean, I, I don't, I can work with it. I can work through anything. But I, I, you know, I think that in the long run, it's going to, you know, if you look at the, you look at the, the other trucks that are going to be coming up, up, up the line, that you're going to be crowding yourself worse and worse if you don't start making some changes.
Well, we fully intend to, at least my, my impression is the board has an appetite to fully fund the capital replacement, uh, budget for the highway department. I guess the question I have is looking out over a three-year timeframe. If we spend the money on this truck right now, what are you looking at in a couple, three years? Will, if the board funds the capital, um, replacement component to your budget, if it's funded at the 100,000 or 125,000 dollar, is that going to take care of your needs?
No. It's not, Chris, it's not. You need to look at the CIP plan.
My conversation. My conversation with Leo. If the board funds the capital budget at 100 to 125,000, is that going to take care of your needs? Or are you going to be constantly coming back to the taxpayers for more money?
Well, I'm not gonna lie to you, Chris. The the excavator itself, if you run that out, I'm putting a little over 1,000 hours plus a year on it. You run that out in a 10 year timeframe, you're you're at, you're at, you're at the end of your, you're at the end of your timeframe with that machine. It does a remarkable job for what we're doing. It it gives me a lot of, a lot of, a lot of latitude of what jobs I can I can bear into and where I'm going. That machine alone is $20,000 a year if you do, if you do a 10 year timeframe on it. You know, on a $200,000 purchase. So you know, I I hear what you're saying. I I'll work with you guys. I'll be glad to push it off another year. But in the in the long run, it it, I think it's gonna be detrimental in the in the long run because you're just gonna, you're gonna back up. Now you're gonna have a pickup truck that needs to go and a dump truck that needs to go at the same time. So I I mean, I I can, I can only, I can make the, I'm not making an argument. All right. I'm making a suggestion. All right. I can't been in your boots so many times. I sat on that board. I know right where you're going. I know what you're up against. And and I'm, we're trying to work with you guys the best I can as well as work with my group of men and and keep everybody moving forward. And I know we've made some great strides in this town and I'm very pleased with with what's going on. And and I'll work with what you got, but I I think that you're gonna find that 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 top kick is gonna let me down. And I'm gonna be switching over anyway. So we'll work, we'll work around it if we have to.
Very good. Selectman Hooper, then Parker.
Yeah. So if you look at the CIP committee report from last year, you can see the, you know, the replacement schedule that was proposed last year, we're even making modifications now because the board did not and the taxpayers did not support the highway department equipment, leaving only $29,000 in the account when we asked for $100,000 to be allocated to that fund. And there was a reason for that. You have equipment because of the fire that was purchased all at the same time that's gonna come due all at the same time. We have worked diligently to try to space that out and we're still working as a committee right now to try to put that together and come up with a way to space it out to get those capital reserve funds boosted back up. But right now you're in a situation where you have two pieces of old equipment that are, that really need to be replaced now or removed out of the frontline. We don't have the funding mechanism to do that. And $100,000 now, yes, that's great for the capital reserve, but we need to fix the equipment that was scheduled on on the docket for this year and take that out of the frontline reserve to get the most out of, you know, the department. Because right now what's happening is if a truck goes down, Justin is coming off the road and that's the mechanic, along with whoever's truck needs to be fixed, leaving a root not being plowed. It's not like we can call in mutual aid to to cover these routes like other departments can if they have an emergency. We only have our vehicles and Leo and his crew has done a great job with managing with what they've had. And I think what we need to do is support this request or, you know, at least tell the financial director that this, you know, to hold those funds to give us a balance report, department by department of what's being moved into that unreserved fund balance. And then when we can make adjustments when you get the CIP report on what we're gonna do and we look at the overall budget moving forward. But I think what we need to do is hold this money now and tell the financial administrator or director to do that so we can have it available for you.
Selectman Parker.
One of the things that we spent a lot of time on last night in the road management committee meeting in the discussions with Leo is looking at the the problem we've got in the CIP with, I think, one truck a year for three years. And the discussion was, what can we do to push some of those away? Because if we put $100,000 in a capital reserve each of the next three years, we still won't have anywhere near enough money in there to fund the plan as it's laid out. So what what we talked to Leo about was moving some, how many of those other trucks could be pushed out to three years? So that if we could get $100,000 a year in the capital reserves, we could meet a reasonable plan with them. And.
Gary Gilbert. Oops, sorry. Sorry about that.
And to do that, this this proposal that Leo has made to really get the taxpayers for $100,000 at the next town meeting for a new truck sounded pretty good.
Yep. Okay, further questions from the board? And I'll just remind everybody that a lot of the capital budgets were not fully funded last year, and that was more or less because of the budgetary headwinds that we were getting from the pandemic. So hopefully we can get on the other side of this pandemic by town meeting and we can start allocating the funds and the economy can get back to normal and all our good stuff. So what's the board's pleasure with this particular issue? I personally do not support it. It is currently written. I'm trying to be a fiscal hawk and hold the budget accountable. And I understand, I understand that he needs machinery and I understand everybody's demands. And again, I go back and I say that it is a finite pot of money and we cannot just keep spending.
I am going to make the motion to have or to have the town administrator direct the financial administrator or financial director to provide us with line by line balances at the end of the year for each department before any funds are transferred into the unreserved fund balance. So we can get a clear picture on what has been left over and to make an educated decision going into this budget cycle. And leave and leave and wait for the CIP's recommendation before any decision is made on the purchase of this truck.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Hoop, Vice Chair Hooper and a second by Selectman Flynn to get some more accurate financial data regarding unreserved fund balances for the end of the year.
And I, it needs to be specified. We need balances line by line from the financial director on what is remaining in each department's budgets at the end of the fiscal year before any funds are moved to unreserved fund balance or another account.
Okay. So I saw Scott's hand up. Scott.
Yeah, I would assume that that's Russ's job all year and he does it anyway.
Yeah, I would too.
But 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 putting a fence against what he can do, I don't think is something in our purview. I think Russ has a job to do. He knows when to do it. And I think the numbers that we're looking for will come out there. But to make that the key towards the CIP, I'm not sure if that's a good mix.
So the CIP has to come before you anyway with the long, the, you know, the updated plan, Scott. So and it is a recommendation and it will give you an idea of what it, what is being proposed compared to last year's plan to formulate the the updated strategy based on the funding mechanisms that were put in place at the last town meeting. Furthermore, we requested the same report last year and were never provided those the balances before any funds were transferred into the unreserved fund balance line by line. So we could see where the overages were and we, and Joe even requested it and we were not provided the information. So therefore I am specifying the information that needs to come from the financial administrator. So this board can make an educated decision moving forward when that time comes.
There's a lot more moving pieces to it than just the CIP and Russ's.
I understand, but we're not, we need to have the full picture and we don't even have the information to do that.
All right, we have a motion by Vice Chair Hooper, seconded by Selectman Flynn. Before we vote, I'd like to get Joe's input on this. Do you have clarity on your mission?
I just, I think my 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 only real question is, is on Thursday or Friday, I emailed you all a budget summary for 2020 that are you looking, that has line by line. Are you looking for something other than that or?
So similar to what is provided to us, like in our budget packets?
Yep.
Before he does anything with it.
What? No, but what I, what I sent you, I I sent you the line by line. I just wanted to make, I understand.
Yeah, but but that's not.
I understand.
Yeah, but there was a lot of information there. He said there's still expenditures coming out of the fire department. Also, there's no encumbered information for contracts that we've entered into like with Stevens for the Western Ave project. So that funding, that allocation has not been removed. So that does not show us a clear balance and there's probably other purchases or expenses that we have obligated that are still showing as in the budget when they should be removed. And all of that should be accounted for at this moment.
Joe, I know that he also does a bunch of year end moves, journal entries.
Typically does, yes. And obviously, that's, that's a piece I believe that Tia wants not make sure it doesn't happen until you all have seen the final numbers. And I understand that.
Well, no, not even, not even so much of moving money out of budgets, but just like the fire department does a massive dump at the end of the year to pay people. And, you know, various other departments do one time expenses on the 31st of December. And it's not necessarily related to the reserve balance or anything like that. It's just, it's
Correct.
Expenses that we may not, may not be aware of that are gonna be occurring. Leon. Leon, go ahead.
Just a question. It sounds like he is assuming that there's going to be a specific action taken by Russ to move money into the unreserved fund balance for each of these things. Is it not a fact that at the end of the year, you didn't have to do anything because that money just ends up in the unreserved fund balance? I mean, there's not a specific transfer action, is there?
Well, what he needs to do is what he is roll the fund or move the funds into the unreserved fund balance to clear out and start the new fiscal year. So technically it's a journal entry, but at the same time, we need a clear picture before any funds are potentially moved. Like, we don't even have a clear picture based on the report that we got from Joe the other week of what we have potentially left over because things haven't even been obligated. That's a problem. Peter.
Yes, I, I will tell you now that there's no official fund balance until the DIA, the auditors tell us what it is. That's the official one. That may take several months, but what we want from Russ or the finance director is a projection. And I think we ought to be careful what we're, he can project what, based on what's left over in the budgets. And what I was supporting in your motion here was to ask him to give a projection in in a timely fashion that you want to evaluate all the departments and see what they have left. But you know, fund balance will not be confirmed until the auditors confirm it and the DRA confirms it all. So that can take months, unfortunately, at this time.
Well, whatever he's estimating in the fund balance, like we need to have a clear picture of each department line by line. Where is the, what has been left over from COVID? What are we looking at that's being moved into that unreserved fund balance line? Because it could be a lot more than what we were anticipating.
That's, that's fair. I support that. I think, I mean, like Scott asked, I think, you know, I don't know if Joe gets this on a regular basis or not. I know, you know, once in a while we see something come through. We started on the budget holdback now. And I I think that, you know, perhaps if Joe doesn't get this on a regular basis, regular meeting, at least monthly during the year and weekly the last quarter, you know, that can be kind of hard for everybody to determine what we're gonna have left.
Well, and I guess my other concern is, Joe, are are department heads getting this on a weekly basis when their checks are being cut? Or how is that dispersed?
The budget reports?
Uh huh.
They do not receive this on a weekly basis, no. I don't receive it on a weekly basis, so.
You're not even receiving it on a weekly basis?
Typically, when I get the report, I send it to you. So.
So it's been, it's been a while.
Last, last time I got it was probably for the budget hearings back in the middle of November. When we all, that Saturday, that's when the report was probably last generated.
All right. Are we good by consensus? Joe, you got a pretty clear message what we're looking for? And is everybody good by consensus to just move this forward?
I'm good.
Okay, thank you. Next up is item number eight. This is Chief Jim Morris. I see his phone is somewhere out there. I think so. Are you gonna be speaking to this or is Joe gonna be speaking to this?
The fire chief will, the fire chief is who is speaking to this. I just asked him to unmute, so.
All right. Keith, you are on deck.
Hello.
Hello.
I do agree with what you said. I like Joe's jacket and tie. He's looking pretty spiffy tonight. Everybody's doing well and getting ready for Christmas. And if you haven't got my Christmas list, let me know and I'll send it over to you.
Where's your sweater? You didn't wear your sweater tonight.
You know, I didn't get, I did not get anything from the town administrator saying it was sweater night.
All right. So what do you got?
Just looking, I'm gonna blame this on Leo. We blew out the Beaver Pond where I wanted to put a little extra water in the area of all of the big facilities, particularly some of our propane facilities on Old Conken Road. So I spoke to Mark Fuser about it and he said, I'll get your quote. And he did and came in at $6,850 and what it does is well, and we surveyed it and we decided to dig it out. We could put in a fire pond there. And then, of course, then it would be the cost of digging it, which we would seek forth to the, some of the people that would benefit from it. And I would think most of them would benefit from it just with their ability to write it off on their insurance to save them money. And that's what I was coming in front of the board for.
You were a little, you were a little digitized there when you talked about acquiring land. Is this land that we already own or do we need to acquire land?
No, we don't need to acquire it. It's wetlands right beside Old Conken Road. And.
Selectman Hooper.
So has this been run by the planning board?
It has not. I just ran it by Mark and I asked Joe should this go in front of the selectmen first? Which direction do we want to go? And Russ said, if you're gonna try to pull it out of your budget this year, we probably ought to be getting to the select board first.
Planning board meets, I think it's next, next week.
23rd.
Yeah. I would almost recommend that this go to them. I know we've had some business inquiries in the past towards that area. So I don't know, I don't know what currently we have potentially pending, but it might be a good idea to inquire and run it by to make sure it's not impacting potentially overall plans. Joe.
Go ahead, Scott.
Yeah, Jimmy, is that, are you gonna be tapping Blaisdell Pond there next to Mitchicorp?
Are you familiar with like Sunnyvale Road there, Chip O'Leary's house? Yep. Leo blew out the Beaver Dam there, which then took our water source away. So I'm gonna blame this all on Leo.
That that works for us. We blame. Leon.
How is that from the stand pipe you've got down at Caesar Pond?
It's probably about a half a mile. I counted the poles up from where the pond would go up to the new Saradale Fuels. It's 900 feet up to Aaron Gosh, you're talking close to I think it was close to 1,800 feet. So it's quite a bit. it's quite a bit. Just on the last fire, we had Cusino's, just to give you a heads up. We went over 2 million gallons of water we pumped. And that wasn't a propane issue. That was just wood and, and barb.
How big of a snowm, sorry, it's in my default. How big of a fire pond are you looking to build?
Well, don't know the exact dimensions right now. It's, it's more or less what, what sits there. It's just getting a little bit of depth and if you're familiar with what the Beaver Pond was there, it's just going to kind of just dredge that out.
So Chief, this is in between the precious Pet Resort and Centerville Road?
Yes, it is.
Go ahead, Scott.
Just going to ask, Joe, can you share a screen and we can just take a look at it?
Yeah, I have a, I have one up now. Hold on.
I have a question. Did the packet not get to the select board with the diagram of the pond?
Yeah, it did not.
Yeah, I got it right here. Hold on.
The, the packet that the board got was the from Mike McNally about the actual engineering of it.
Yeah, can you see my screen?
Yeah, I could see it.
Yep. So this, I believe this is where you're thinking about it, Chief.
Yeah, that's, that's where Mark suggested it go and I, it's not a bad spot. Just going to give us a little extra water source down in that area if we have an issue.
Yeah. And so you can see the Cerro Deli Fuel in this area, I believe, has all been cleared out for potential development, correct?
I think you're correct on that.
Thanks.
What's the planning board going to have to do with it?
Well, if, if the planning board has something coming up in a, you know, site plan review or anything like that, it will, we can at least talk about it to see if it makes sense and what the overall strategy is, but we, we should probably figure out if there's any plans or anything that could impact that. Because if somebody is out there potentially going to be developing this land, and knowing that there's a wetland here, they, they might have to take, think and take into consideration some other strategies as well.
Didn't we run, didn't the chief run this? I, I thought he said he ran this by Mark Fugere.
Mark stole one that got the call.
So wouldn't Mark be aware of what's going on with the planning board?
Well, we've asked even at the planning board level, like projects of regional impact. And sometimes those don't come up until prompted. So it might be good just to circle back to verify.
Leon.
Problem is that it sounds like you want it submitted to the planning board for approval. Reason for that sounds like it's for information that can be shared. As you consider other things, it seems to me that the appropriate thing to do is for us to express we either support it or don't or vote for it or whatever. And then the planning board can be told about it and as projects come up, there, and this is where Fugere comes in. It's a, it's an additional benefit to somebody trying to develop something in the area.
Well, we also have a meeting, you know, on the 23rd. So, and we had a meeting also last week. So if Mark knew about this, I'm surprised he didn't mention something at the last planning board meeting.
I think that question, does a planning board have to approve it? I don't think they do.
No, but I, I, I think out of consideration as we move forward with some of these projects and we're looking at economic development as well. I think it would be in the best interest if everybody communicated.
If, if we approve it, then the planning board can tell everybody about it as they come in.
Go ahead, Joe.
So again, this, this idea, this is just for the engineering of it. This isn't actually building it. This isn't, this is to get the engineering. So in the event the chief ever does want to move forward with it, whether it be somebody moving into that property or reaching out to the businesses that are already there. I don't think, and correct if I'm wrong, Chief, I don't think he's looking to expend the money actually building the fire pond. We're looking to do the legwork, legwork to get the engineering done on the fire pond. And then when we decide to move forward with it, we're going to go from there. But this is just for the engineering. This isn't for the actual building it and dredging in and doing the process.
Go ahead, Scott.
Yeah, it's been my experience with when a governmental entity wants to do something with land, they just do it. They don't need the planning boards.
That's not a best practice.
Sometimes just as a courtesy that they can go to it. But when a government entity has a plan, then that's the plan that they do.
Further questions from the board?
Joe has a comment.
Joe, sorry, didn't see.
No problem. The road agent is asking to speak on this.
Sure. Nobody objects?
I might.
You threw him under the bus. Now it's his turn. Go ahead, Leo. Why'd you blow up the dam? We could have had this all solved.
Chris, I, first of all, I question whether or not that is swamp is private property. All right. Somebody owns it somewheres. All right. I, I'm sure the person whoever owns it would be more than happy to donate it to the town for, for future endeavors in building a fire pond. My consideration would be the location of the fire pond has got to be in such a location that it doesn't affect the road. The, the problem is, is part of that swamp goes underneath the road. And if you dredge it, it's going to pull the road down with it because it's nothing but peat moss underneath there. So it's got to be built out more so in front of, and I think I had this conversation with the town engineer, it's got to be built almost directly across the street from the driveway of the, of the, the dog kennel. Secondly, or third, I should say, there's plenty of water there. They don't have to dig very deep to get a lot. Because when we looked at it, we're in the middle of that drought and there was standing water inside there. It's unfortunate that the beavers seem to hate me a little bit, like to plug up my culverts, but I have to do what I have to do and I, 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 and I, and it works well for me. So at least my culverts aren't plugged up, but unfortunately Jim doesn't have any water. But I certainly feel his pain. But some, some, some planning has got to be taking place into exactly where your location is. And is it the people that own and who owns that swamp? Because I'm sure the town doesn't own the swamp.
I believe all that comes out of this survey that we're asking to do.
More than likely, it would probably would, would do that.
Okay. Well, what's the board's pleasure on this?
I make a motion, we pursue the engineering study as presented by the chief.
There's a second to that. We have a motion by Selectman Flynn, seconded by Selectman Osgood. Further discussion on the motion. Leon.
I'm just going to second it.
Okay. Further discussion.
One more thing before you vote, Chris, this would probably be a, a help to the fire, the highway as well. Because in the off season, when they're not fighting fires, we can probably draw water out of that, the water down our roads.
Very good. Thank you. Further discussion. Joe, any other input?
Nope.
Okay, ready to call, roll call, vote? Chris, yes. Vice Chair Hooper?
Yes.
So let's go with Leon. Scott?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries five, nothing. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, Chief, anything else?
Would Joe speak to Mark to make that happen?
We'll take care of it, Chief.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Chief.
Have a good evening.
Thank you. Okay, next up is item number nine, general assessing services. Master Joe, you are here.
I am, thank you. So currently the town has contracted with Cochran Consulting. They completed the 2020 assessing services for us. Our contract is up on December 31st. We're seeking to renew it. There was no price increase from 2020 to 2021. So the, looking at $28,500 again. I'm just looking for the board to authorize me to move forward with executing this agreement with Cochran Consulting.
I'll make a motion to authorize the town administrator to move forward with the contract.
A second. Motion made by Vice Chair Hooper, seconded by Selectman Flynn. Questions, Scott?
Yeah, I just wondered, yeah, hourly rates for these guys is pretty dramatic. Compared to what their engineers are getting, it's like triple. Is that normal?
Yeah, that, looking, I've, I've seen a couple of other contracts from other companies and it is pretty similar. You know, I think, I, I've said this a couple of times to the board. Next year, I, I want to consider moving towards reevaluating our town yearly as opposed to every five years. And a piece of that would be taken up with this contract. So, you know, it may look much different come 2022 when we're moving forward with this.
Further comment?
Just, just in response to Scott's talking about the South, page 40, those aren't that outrageous. Nobody's getting a hundred bucks an hour.
Yep. Ready to call the vote?
But these guys are 290 bucks an hour. It's crazy.
Where are you seeing 290 bucks an hour?
Page 49. Well, that's the next one.
We haven't gotten that far yet.
Okay, sorry. I'm ahead of you.
I was like, wait a minute, what am I missing here? Okay.
It's coming.
Roll call vote, Chris, yes. Tia?
Yeah, yes.
Leon? So the S? Yes, Scott?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Next item up is utility revaluation contract, item 10, George Sansucci. Joe, go.
So again, our, this is, we're speaking to assessing again, but this is going to be for our utilities currently. Mr. Sansucci's company currently does our appraisal services. This is for a five-year contract for $7,950 per year. It's actually a decrease from what we've been paying by $1,250. So I'm looking for the town, the board to authorize me to enter a contract with Sansucci for the utility contract.
I'll make the motion to authorize the town administrator to enter in the contract as presented.
For a second. I'll second it, seconded by Selectman Flynn. Further discussion. Okay, Scott, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I think he's always done a great job. I was just surprised at the engineering and appraisal rate schedule on page 49. $290 an hour. And that includes their, their driving too. It's not just mileage. I just thought that was a lot. But it's not a big contract, otherwise.
Yeah, no, it's not a big.
It's a very specialized field, Scott, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, and look at what we've been involved in, right?
All right, motion made, seconded. Further discussion. Roll call vote, Chris, yes.
Tia, yes.
Leon? Scott?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
All right, very good. Item number 12, moving right along here. Or sorry, item 11, holiday hours. Joe?
So this is going to be for first reading on our personnel policy. At our last meeting, we kind of talked a little bit about the transfer station, holiday hours, then having the ability to bank the hours. Coming out of that, obviously, we've realized we need to make a change to the personnel policy so that they are not banking these hours anymore. So basically, I, I looked at it. In my opinion, we have two options when dealing with holiday hours being accrued by the transfer station. One of them, because the policy states any full timer who is not scheduled to work on a calendar holiday, may be given another scheduled workday off with pay in such days as the discretion of the department head. This is kind of what prompted the whole, just to give you the background, what prompted them having or thinking they have this ability to bank holidays. And this is something that happened years ago. So we're just trying to clean it up now. So now typically, holiday hours do not result in overtime according to the federal government. And the reason being is because overtime only needs to be paid for hours worked in excess of 40 hours. This means an employee can be paid 48 hours and eight of those would be holiday time. All hours would be paid straight since it only actually worked 40 hours. But if you read our policy for the town of Hennecker, it's under the actual hours worked. It stipulates right in there that holiday and vacation are considered time worked. And I think the idea behind this, what comes from, I use the wastewater as an example. If they have a holiday on a Monday, let's just say, and they have to come in and work because they have to be at the, at the treatment plant seven days a week to check the levels and things like that. They come in on a Saturday, they typically get three hours of overtime. Having it written this way, they truly get three hours of overtime to come in on their Saturday as opposed to getting, you know, 35 straight hours and then eight hours of holiday, all at straight time. So the other option is an addendum A under holidays. The last paragraph currently reads that police officers are required to work their regular numbers of hours regardless of any holidays which occurred during the week. They are compensated for holiday rate at straight time and to receive their accumulated holiday pay in a lump sum every six, every six months. Once in July and once in December. I would suggest we change that and add transfer station employees to that as well. So then the new paragraph would simply read, police office and transfer station employees are still required to work and so on. I think this is the easiest and cleanest way to really make that change. And by doing it this way, if in the event they, let's say a holiday falls where they end up short eight hours because we hold those eight hours of the holiday pay, they then would be taking vacation time or using a comp time so they still would get a 40-hour week. Because they would get that holiday check once in July and then the second one in December.
Yeah.
So I have a question. So the, the day in, in question, the transfer station was not open. However, we did have some employees work when the rest of the town was closed. Shouldn't those transfer station employees not have come in? Period? Because the transfer station was closed and the town hall was also closed. There was no expectation for them to work.
That is correct.
So will we continue that?
Leon.
I move that, that this change to the personnel policy is done, then I be moved to a second reading.
There's a second to that.
Second.
Seconded by, was that Peter or Scott? Peter? Further discussion on the motion. Ready to call a roll call vote? Chris, yes. Tia?
Yes.
Leon? Scott?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Moving along. Item 12, payout of holiday accrued time.
So again, this came up at the last meeting. We talked about this briefly. You know, we, we're coming to the end of the year. We need to clean up our books. And one of the things we do have is all this holiday time that's been accrued. I, I, you know, I, I talked about it at the last meeting. We talked about it a couple of different times. Right now, basically, we have $8,817 that needs to be paid out for accrued holiday time from this past practice that we're trying to get rid of. I broke it down for you to get an idea on the employees and how much money they would have coming to them. It, it's my recommendation so that we can stop this practice and get it off of our books that we pay the employees out for the holiday time.
Yeah, we have no choice.
Leon?
I move to authorize the town administrator to pay out the $8,817 in accrued holiday hours for the eligible employees.
There's a second.
I'll second it.
Okay. Scott?
I just wanted to joke, do, so, so this is the fact that the employees do not use all their, their vacation and holiday time.
No.
They just keep carrying it. So does that mean that they have to, they will lose whatever it is every year now? Or they will still be allowed to accrue some of it?
So this is just the holiday time we're talking about. This has nothing to do with vacation time or anything else. So this is basically for years and years, the transfer station has been working on holidays. And they've been banking these hours that they work. So let's, let's use 4th of July as an example. They actually were open even though the rest of the town was closed. So they would take those hours that they worked and they would put it into their holiday, it's comp time essentially, but they call it a holiday time. And they would use it as vacation time, comp time and draw on it. We really shouldn't be doing this. It's a horrible practice. And so I'm, I'm trying to clean the books. Well, we're not going to be doing this practice anymore. To me, it's easier to get rid of it so that we don't have it hanging there. You know, a good example is, we'll use. You know, a good example is, we'll use, um, we had an employee leave the transfer station and move over to wastewater. Well, it's not fair to wastewater that he has all these hours of holiday time that he has to use up, and now it's getting booked to wastewater, and they're having to run short staff because he's using up this time. You know, if they left the town, we'd have to pay it out. I think it's just easier to clean the books, and then we know the practice is stopped. Um, the transfer stations are where they are closed on every single holiday that the town observes, including Easter, according to our personnel policy. So those days are closed. So the, my, my, everyone listening out there, so that means on Thursday and Friday of net, Thursday, the transfer station's closed next week because it's Christmas Eve, and the holiday is an observed holiday by the town. Um, and so that's how we're going to be moving forward. They're going to be closed, so they're not accruing this time anymore.
Thank you.
Yep.
Further questions? And we're positive this doesn't exist in any other department, correct?
This does not exist in any other department.
Very good. Uh, did we have a motion?
Yep. So Leon made the motion I seconded.
All right, roll call vote. Chris, yes. Tia?
Tia, yes.
Leon?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Motion carried five, nothing. Thank you very much. Item number thirteen, renewal. Sorry, it was something. Item number thirteen, renewal of tax anticipation note, Joe?
Uh, so, uh, the finance director asked me to bring this forward to you guys. Um, he's looking to renew the twenty twenty-one tan. Um, last year for twenty twenty, our rate was two point five five percent. It's down point twenty, so we're at two point three five percent. Uh, no other financial institutions are going to be able to offer us a line of credit. Uh, Citizens Bank and TD don't offer these types of loans. They offer just a straight-up loan as opposed to the line of credit, which is, which advances the full principal on day one, and we start paying interest on it. Um, this gives us the opportunity to draw on as we need, so we're not paying interest on it the entire time. Um, so we're just looking for the authorization to sign the paperwork and move forward with the tax anticipation note.
Tia?
Uh, I'll let Leon go first because he had his hand up first.
Right, Leon?
I move we authorize the town administrator to sign the paperwork to move forward with the renewal of the tax anticipation note with Franklin savings at two point three five percent for two thousand twenty-one.
Okay, seconded by Hooper?
No, I didn't second that, but I'm coming back. I have a question.
You have a second. I'll second it for the purposes of discussion. Go ahead, Tia.
So Joe had mentioned previously, and we've had discussions previously about potentially changing our fiscal year with this, you know, I understand why Russ takes out the tan. But would we really, would we really need it if we could, you know, get on that alternative schedule? Potentially?
We would not need a tan at that point because what we're doing with the tan is because of the way our fiscal year runs, we don't get paid until our first taxes come due in June. Uh, when you switch to a fiscal year as opposed to a calendar year, as our taxes are coming in in June, our fiscal year is just starting, so there's no actual tax anticipation note because we start the year with money, then in December, when our second bills come in, we get our second round of money to cover us through this, this, the six months that in a calendar year we need a tan for. Um, for the town to move forward with that, though, it's, it's, it's not that it's tricky, but we have to have a lot of money in the bank, and a lot of towns, when they make the switch, either they have a warrant article specifically for that because you have to make sure you're covered essentially eighteen months of money in the bank to make the switch from a calendar year to a fiscal year.
So technically, um, probably not for this town meeting, but, you know, the following town meeting, we could plan out for those eighteen months and also have, um, the legislative body vote that we, we shift to a different system.
That's correct.
Further questions? Ready to call a vote? All those, oh, got a roll call. Chris, yes. Tia?
Yes.
Leon?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Peter, yes.
Yes.
Peter, yes. All right, meeting's starting to get long in the two, trying to move it along here. Uh, item number fourteen, transfer to sta, transfer station disposal and transportation request for RFP tabled from the last meeting, or two meetings ago.
So back in November, um, we did table this. I'm just going to pull up a document just so I have the correct numbers. Stay with me. Um, what I'm looking to do, um, you know, I think the town's really trying to investigate how we want to move forward with our transfer station and what's going on down there. Um, our contract is currently up with Casella. So what I'm looking to do, I've reached out to them, I'm looking to have the board authorize me to sign a six-month extension with Casella so we can really kind of dive into our transfer station. One of the things I think is worthwhile looking at, um, to help with cost of single-stream recycling, I, I really just want to kind of really look at that before we sign a long-term contract with any haulers. Um, having the six-month extension with Casella, which is our current contract, gives us the opportunity to do that. So I'm looking for the board to authorize me for that.
I'll make a motion to authorize the town administrator to enter into the extension with Casella.
For a second.
Scott, second.
Motion made by Vice Chair Hooper, seconded by Selectman Osgood. Further discussion on the motion? Ready to call a roll call vote? Chris, yes.
Tia, yes.
Leon?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Very good. Item fifteen, building code enforcement, housing organization ordinance. That's a mouthful.
Yes. So this, this has been, um, ongoing since I think about October, I started the process with you guys. Um, we started a building code, um, working group that's been meeting. Um, we, back at the December, um, I'm sorry, back in the November meeting, um, I presented some ordinances to you guys. You, um, okayed them, passed them up to the planning board with planning board review. Uh, the planning board met in December ninth to discuss these ordinances. And they made some recommendations. Um, the building code working group took those recommendations and have modified and made some changes. Um, so basically, I'm just going to go through the changes as opposed to the full document, because it'll be a little bit easier. Uh, there was four recommended changes that came out of the planning board, uh, three to the building code and one to the housing ordinance. Um, the first recommended change was currently the permit, um, stated we had thirty days to deny or approve the building permit. The planning board suggestion was change it to fourteen days. Under the building permit, um, shall be valid for two years, meaning the length of time. Uh, the planning board suggestion was change it to one year. And then under the permit not required, it currently read other examples not requiring permits according to the code include, um, the suggestion coming out of the planning board, other examples not requiring permits according to the code include but are not limited to. Um, on the housing ordinance side, um, section five under the exemptions, it read, it started out as no, all non-owner occupied dwelling units which are condemned or uninhabitable for human occupancy are dwelling which are being renovated. Um, the planning suggestion was, um, all non-owner occupied dwelling units which are condemned as uninhabitable for human occupancy and dwellings which are being renovated. After the building code group met on, on December eleventh, um, we, uh, we reck, took three of those recommendations, um, and did not deal with one of them. Um, and so basically, on the, the building code under section ten for permits not required, um, the change that the building code came at, and this is what we're presenting to you now, are other examples not requiring permits according to the code but are not limited to. Under appendix B, which is the schedule for processing, um, they did make the change as far as the timeframe. Upon a submission or completed application, the code official shall act or approve the night, the building permit within fourteen days for one and two family dwellings and thirty days for non-residential applications encompassing more than two dwellings. Um, and I think the thought process behind that was, you know, what came out of the planning board that were concerned, especially with single-family houses, builders having to wait fourteen days for the permit, uh, I mean, sorry, thirty days for their permit. Uh, making that fourteen days is going to make it a much faster turnaround. The reason we kept the commercial and more than one or two families at thirty days is because there's a lot, a lot of times, there's a lot more plan review that has to occur specific with a commercial property, or let, let's say, if New England College is doing a renovation. Uh, it may not be feasible to turn something that large around in the fourteen days with a plan review. So that's why we kept that at the thirty, but the single-family houses, because there isn't as much involved in it, we worry, we did write the recommendation to change it to fourteen days. And then under the Hennecker housing standards, section five, the exemptions, um, the change that came out of it was all non-owner occupied dwelling units which are condemned as uninhabitable for human occupancy or dwellings which are being renovated for which a legal current building permit has been issued shall be exempt from this ordinance while the permit is valid. So it's my recommendation to the board that if we're good with these changes and we're good with the way the ordinances are written, we would then permit, send it back to the planning board. So.
So the planning board has another meeting scheduled next week to review this same thing, and they haven't been notified of the changes. Um, usually, the planning board votes to approve, you know, the ordinance change before the Board of Selectmen endorses. I would wait for the planning board to review the changes and make any other additional comments before we, um, approve these.
Yeah.
Yeah, Joe, I just wanted to ask, what's the basis of, of the permitting itself? The IBC or state statutes or what?
Well, the, the actual, the code itself, I mean, we're, we're pulling it from the IRC and the IBC specifically.
Fifteen, point fifteen?
Fifteen, yep.
Okay.
Leon?
Uh, confused. It says here that the planning board reviewed it and made these suggestions.
Yep, so we made these suggestions, and the committee is supposed to be coming back to us next week so we can review it, um, again because the policy or the, the fines and fees hadn't been incorporated yet, and, um, these changes hadn't been incorporated. And before we endorsed it, we wanted to make sure that, um, we read it in full again.
So these changes came from a subcommittee?
It's supposed to be coming back to us next week so we can review it, um, again because.
I don't know what that was.
I don't either.
The, the planning board made suggestions, and then the subcommittee took those suggestions, and then these are where we're at right now. I, Tia, I have, I would have to check. My concern is, I don't know if we'll have enough time to post the public hearing. I think it has to be posted by, I want to say, January seventh?
Yeah, well, i- if the planning board can come to an agreement on the twenty-third that things look okay to post the public hearing, then we'll move forward. But, um, the planning board has, still has not given a final stamp on this.
You guys are meeting December twenty-third?
Yeah, is that our next meeting, Joe?
I believe so. Yep.
Yeah.
Got some dedicated public servants right there. Go ahead, Scott.
Oh, um, do, do, do we have the authority to change the IRC or the IBC, uh, codes? Does the town have the right to do that?
They, they do have the ability to amend them, yes.
Is this something that, uh, because time is of the essence, that, uh, we can concurrently do, Joe? I mean.
Yeah, I mean, if, if you, I, I attached a memo because, um, should be here. After all the draft copies, um, because the, the committee did meet about the permits as well, I was trying, I was going to deal with one before I dealt with the other. Um, but the permit fees is something we did discuss um, at that same meeting. And so again, our recommendation is going to be going to the planning board. Um, as far as the fees go, is basically, we looked at the surrounding communities, um, specifically, we used, um, Hillsborough, uh, Deering and Hopkinton. And basically, we use the fifty-dollar administrative fee for residential permits and a hundred dollar, um, for commercials. And then it would be twenty-five cents per, per foot would be our recommendation as far as permanent fees go for any of your residential, your plumbing, your electrical and mechanical. So. This, this, this piece, though, does not have to be acted on. At this point, this is something that the board can take action on. Um, it doesn't have to go to town meeting. It doesn't have, it's something that you have the authority to deal with. Um, it's the fees.
What would you say the percentages of the document that's already gone before the planning board versus the changes?
Like, again, the only, the only change is it came out of the planning board with the four that we talked about. Um, we basically listened to three out of the four. The one that we didn't was the two-year requirement on the permit. Um, and there's a couple of members of the planning board that are on the building working group as well. Um, and the two years, we, we felt it wasn't unreal, unrealistic to have a permit open for two years if somebody's working on it, let's say, by themselves or on home. Um, and they don't have a builder and they're doing it themselves. For that work to have to go maybe a year, a year and a half up to that two-year mark, um, which is why we didn't make that change. But the other three items, uh, we listened to the planning board's comments and made the suggested changes.
Okay.
But the planning board still has not endorsed this, and that's why we're meeting on the twenty-third, um, to review this once again, and that's where the, um, approval needs to come from.
Joe, does that put you in a bind or no?
It's going to be cutting it close. I mean, but my concern is that for some reason, we don't have a meeting on January fifth. We're not going to make the deadline to get this in front of town meeting to get it posted. That's my concern. So our next meeting is January fifth at the Selectman.
I think we're all planning to be on Zoom, correct?
That would be my assumption, yeah.
Okay, so what do you need, what, so, what does somebody got to do? We got to kick this either to the planning board or make a motion to kick it to the planning board? What are you looking?
The planning, the planning board's already, um, scheduled to be reviewing this on the twenty-third. I think we need to hold off on giving our final approval until it goes back to the planning board so the changes can be conveyed. Um, and any final recommendations from the planning board can be issued to the committee, uh, for the final document before it comes to us.
So Tia, you've been serving, you're serving dual purpose, and who's the other one? Leon?
Um, so Peter's my backup, but yes, I've been, I, I was part of the conversation, um, where these changes came out of.
Okay, um, are they going to have any heartburn with what's here?
Um, I think there might be some additional discussion on that one year and how the committee came to that, but I know, um, the, the group was specifically asked to come back to the planning board, um, so we could review again.
This motion suggests.
Go ahead, Leon.
A little confused about what's going on. The suggested motion says that we like it and submit it to the planning book board so they can do what Tia is talking about.
Yeah, but here's the thing, Leon, we, um, in the past, we do not interfere in the ordinance changes that are coming out of the planning board. I highly recommend we wait for the planning board to issue their final approval before we give our stamp.
So the, the reason I did it this way, because RSA six seventy-five-three, you, the Board of Selectmen, are the ones making this ordinance. You're the one essentially pushing it forward, and six seventy-five-three gives you the authority to do that. And what you're doing is, is when you make that authority, you're passing it to the planning board per the RSA, which is how I was presenting it.
Method of enactment in certain towns and village districts. Six seventy-five-three. That's the title.
All right, I'm a little out of quandary here as to how to proceed. Do we?
Well, I say, the planning board's already meeting on the twenty-third, like, just let them review the policy, uh, with the changes incorporated and, because it's going to have to come back to us on January fifth anyway. Um, so I don't think we really need to take any action until that January fifth meeting. We can just make a, a, or like, come to a consensus, we're okay with the, with the changes that have been incorporated, but the planning board still needs to do their final review.
I'm following Joe's guidance here. He's, so.
I, I mean, I understand what Tia is saying. I don't think, I think this board has the ability to push it up to the planning board with these recommended changes, and if they're okay with it, it's, it's a done issue. It doesn't have to come back on January fifth. I mean, I'm trying to, I'm, I'm just trying to take a step out of it. As opposed to, that, that's where I'm coming from with this.
I hear you, and you know, you want to try and be as collaborative as you possibly can to try and, but if they've already had, haven't they had like two cracks at this thing already?
They've seen it twice, yes.
Twice. So they've already kicked back. I mean, we didn't, I mean, that last meeting, we didn't really make a whole lot of changes.
You didn't make any changes.
So what is the planning, I'm not, I'm not trying to cut the planning board out.
So the planning board wanted to see the fees, and since there wasn't a meeting, um, the original meeting of the committee, which was supposed to be the Friday before the planning board meeting, was canceled. Um, and since there was another meeting scheduled, we wanted them to circle back with, um, you know, with the full policy with the, or the ordinance with the changes, so we could take one look, you know, another final look at the final document as it was written to see if everybody was good with that before we did anything.
Leon?
We approve it subject. We approve it subject to concurrence by the planning board and be done with the damn thing?
Oh, good.
And then doesn't, doesn't like it, they can send it back to us. But if they're agree with, agreeing to it, we don't have to consider it again.
Always the wise sage, Leon, always the wise sage. Does that work for you, Joe?
Yep.
And we'll put it on Tia to say, please don't make any changes. I mean, the, the changes from the last meeting are so minor. I mean, we're talking like, you know, fees of fifty bucks or twenty-five bucks. It's like, doesn't really matter. So.
Thirty days to fifteen days, oh, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it, I don't think the pl- planning board's going to have heartburn with it, but it, you know, it does, I don't think it should come back before the board if those guys are fine. Just let it go so that we stay on task and um, and all that stuff. So Leon, you want to put yours in the form of a motion?
Uh, the board hereby approves and supports the changes proposed tonight in the Hennecker Building Code, Hennecker Housing Code, Citation Authority Ordinances for RSA six seventy-five dash three. Subject to concurrence by the planning board and we're sending these ordinances to the planning board for public hearing and placement on the town meeting warrant.
Is there a second? Seconded in the process of the discussion.
I'll second it.
Okay, Joe, does that serve you?
It does.
Tia, does that serve you? Tia? All right.
We need verbal, we need a verbal.
I can, I can interpret language. Uh, I'm married to, um. Bring it to all the vote. Chris, yes. Tia?
abstain.
Abstain. Leon?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Joe, that worked for you, right?
It did. Thank you, sir.
Okay, next up, acceptance of selectmen minutes, December first, two thousand twenty. This is item sixteen. This is page ninety-four for those playing the home game. I make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
What page are we on?
Page ninety-four, non-public.
Thank you.
Uh, that's ninety-three.
Excuse me.
Okay.
I've got ninety-three.
Yeah, ninety-three, I got two.
I got page ninety-four.
I think there's a paper copy added in the um governor's executive order because at the time of original drafting of this, we didn't have that. We weren't at Zoom, so.
Okay. I make a motion to approve the non-public minutes. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion made by Chris, seconded by Hooper. Roll call vote. Chris, yes.
Tia, yes.
Leon?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
All right, acceptance of selectmen minutes, December first, public. Item seventeen, which would be page ninety-five. Is there a motion?
Um, so I think we need to clarify under item nine. So it says there was discussion regarding keeping vacation sick time, personal days or PTO. Um, I think we need to make sure that it was tabled to further investigate um changing from vacation and sick time to move to PTO.
Hey, anything else? I'll make a motion to approve the public minutes of Tuesday, December first, two thousand twenty with the following changes as outlined by Selectman Hooper.
Second.
Seconded by Parker. Roll call vote. Chris, yes. Hooper?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
How's good?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Very good, thank you. Uh, department reports. Okay. Uh, item nineteen, town administrator report.
Yep. So um as of December ninth, this is just an update as far as the COVID numbers go for the town. Um, as of December ninth, we had twenty active cases, which is essentially zero point four one percent of the population uh for a total of ninety-five cumulative cases through the duration of this pandemic, which is two percent of our population. Uh, we've got two thousand five hundred and fifty-three people tested, which is fifty-three percent of Hennecker. And the positivity rate for Hennecker is currently at eleven point one percent. Just so everyone knows.
Eleven percent?
Eleven percent. So positivity rate refers to the percentage of all coronavirus tests that come back positive, just so people are aware of what that is.
That's not a.
What's that? No, it's not. It's the tide. So um I wrote it, again, as the random report, the vaccine had not been approved. We obviously know it has been approved now. Um, I've been dealing with the fire chief, police chief and rescue chief as far as um our emergency services personnel because they are in phase one of the vaccine. Um, so we're looking um for that to move forward here relatively shortly. Um, energy upgrades. Uh, back in two thousand nineteen, uh, the town reached out to Daystar Builders to complete an energy audit on the buildings. Uh, they received a quote for upgrades to the town hall, community center and Grange. These were included in the twenty-twenty operating budget. Um, I've finally been able to get in touch with Jason from Daystar, um, and we are moving forward with these upgrades that were approved during the twenty-twenty. The total cost is going to be fifteen thousand one hundred and fifty-seven, which is actually less than the original quote of sixteen thousand six hundred and eighty-three. Um, so I just wanted to let, that's going to be including uh weather tidying, uh, weather ceiling spray foam, replacing certain doors, repairing rot on the Grange, town hall and the community center. Uh, also in the twenty-twenty operating budget was a community center ramp. Um, this went in October in front of the historic district because the original plan was to put an aluminum ramp on the back to replace the wooden one that's rotting in the, a community center. Um, Historic District Commission voted not to approve us to move forward with an aluminum ramp because they thought it would um take away from the historic character of the building. Um, so I have reached out to again Jason from Daystar, um, and he's given us a quote of one thousand five hundred and twenty-three dollars to replace the PT that's down there, re-sand it and reseal it. So we'd be replacing any rotten woods. Uh, and when he does it, it's going to be a um, a non-slip surface paint that he's going to be able to put on it. Um, so I'm going to, if the board's okay, I'm going to be moving forward with this. It's less than the original budget of three thousand three hundred for the aluminum ramp, so.
Good.
Um, swap shop, um, with winter upon us, um, and it's getting harder for us to maintain the swap shop with volunteers. Also with snow removal, the swap shop can be a hindrance at times, um, if people are leaving things outside it when it's not open. Um, I'm recommending to the board that we again look to maybe close the swap shop for the winter, um, and then reopen in the springtime. I don't know if the board has any opinion on that. We did this last year as well. Um, I think it's just going to be easier for us to help maintain the transfer station area.
I agree. Um, I support that.
Uh, what, just wait till after Christmas?
We, we can do that, yeah.
I agree with it.
Um. Hennecker cares. This was something we did uh back on May fifth during one of our board meetings. We instituted what we, we called Hennecker cares during the pandemic. Um, one of the pieces that we moved forward with was assist, assisting property owners who are suffering from hardships uh with their tax bills. I'm looking to see if the board wants to extend this option again to the taxpayers.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. No, I, I think, I think the second wave, you know, we haven't even um seen the, the shutdowns, but I, I think you're going to see a lot more people economically or financially impacted as we move forward and um I think this could benefit some people.
So just to remind the board, basically what we will be doing is, is we take their prop, their tax bill, we break it up into five payments of twenty percent. At the conclusion of the, making the payments, we abate the taxes from the typical eight percent to four percent uh to make it a little bit easier for them. But it gives them the option to spread those payments out rather than having to come up with a one lump sum. The board is, the board is good with that?
Okay with me.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, just to give you an update, um, Hennecker lights, um, light sites and holiday nights uh was something we've been really pushing as far as having a light contest in town. Um, it, the response has been great. We had forty-seven people um put in to participate in this. Um, and if people go on the town website or on Facebook, we've already established a map.
It's beautiful, beautiful, by the way, Joe.
Thank you. So the residents can go around and they can view all the lights that are out there, so.
Do, do we give them a prize?
We are going to be giving them a prize, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so um we have some judges that are going to be going around and viewing um the properties and basically picking the top ones in the three different categories that we have, and we're going to give a prize to each one of the top categories, so. And then finally, I just, you know, I know things look a little bit different this year, but I just wanted to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy Holidays. That's what I want to wear in my nation.
To you, Joe.
Thank you.
Got to light your jacket up, don't you, can't you plug that thing in or something?
It doesn't have any lights. I wish it did.
Very good.
Next year.
Yeah.
Good stuff. Thank you, Joe. Uh, any questions for Joe on that? Leckman reports. Let's uh, let's go left to right. Leon?
Uh, we had a road management committee meeting uh last night and formally voted to ask for the uh, another round of the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar warrant article for uh highway expendable trust. Uh, we believe that with that, we will be able to fix Depot Hill Road due to the um drainage that Leo talked about earlier. Uh. Do Bennett Road, Elm Street, Circle Street, widen Mount Hunger and probably do about a half of the old Hillsborough Road. So that's our that's our wish list for next year.
Great.
That's all I have.
Okay, Scott?
Oh, I have nothing.
Okay, I've got nothing um that was covered at length with the uh building committee. Peter?
Um, all the committees I represent were, did not meet in the last, since our last meeting. Um, Historic District Commission uh canceled their meeting. I've been busy the last week, seven or eight days, as some of you know. Uh, and I'm feeling very good now, so I'll be back to work tomorrow. The other situation is, is the pole out here in front of my house, um, Super Scoops has been uh asking for a certain concession. And the one big concession we gave over a year and a half ago was giving them phase three electricity capabilities by installing a new telephone pole and adding those three big uh um things on top of the, yeah. And uh about six, four, five weeks ago, my wife and I were very excited when we saw two or three utility trucks pull up and start to work some wires out there. But that's all they did. They just took a couple and moved them over to one of the other posts. So there's still three posts and the one big one that is on the sidewalk, which was Leo's idea to move uh out, I believe, at one point. The pole has never been removed and I'm wondering if, I'm saying this publicly to all three, all five of you because we get concessions, we give them, and then the promises of the aftermath have not been met yet and I'm a little nervous about that. And uh I would like that pole removed and I would like to see what we can do to get that pole removed and bring it back down to two poles. Right now, there's three big poles on my driveway.
I, I can't recall what the, the plan actually called for, Joe. If you can look and see what the plan called for that was originally proposed.
I believe Leo was dealing with this. Um, I, I'll have to follow up. I know it's, it's TDS, I believe, who was supposed to be taking it down last I had heard. Um, and he was working with them on that. Obviously, they hadn't, so I'll, I'll reach out to Leo and we'll follow up on it. But it should be going back down to two.
You, you end up with a real time delay on those things because the electric company and the phone company have to schedule work a long time. Takes forever to get it done.
Yeah.
Well, I just thought I'd give Joe a little poke to maybe go on my behalf and see what he can do for us.
Peter, just so, just so you know, A- Allison, um, I believe from the Hennecker house said that Ray spoke to them when they were there and they're waiting on Comcast to move their wires and then the pole can be taken down.
Oh, okay. All right.
Just so you have an update. Thank you, Allison.
That I didn't know, but you know, um, I don't have anything else, Mr. Jim, and that's it.
Very good, thank you. And Tia?
Yep, so you've already heard about planning board. Um, CIP meets on Thursday to continue work on their report. Um, we're also looking forward to speaking with the highway superintendent and also the fire department regarding their um capital reserves.
Very good. Scott, I saw your hand go up.
Yeah, just a question. We get this Zoom group chat and typically without the Zoom, we just have people come up at the end and have, have their, have their say. And we've got a quite, quite a list of co- of comments, which only, uh, only anyone, anybody that turns it on can see it. I was wondering if we could put them into like a comment period at the end of the uh meetings as we do typically.
Sure, we have the public comment, you know, as part of the, the agenda, so um, if everybody's done with their select report reports, uh, it's now time for public comment. So maybe Joe.
Maybe you can just read.
Yep, so if any audience members wish to address the board on any issues that uh we either talked about tonight or that are not on the agenda, please come forward and uh in the interim, I'll have Joe kind of parse through the comments and maybe he can distill them down to questions or comments to the board, so.
So just, yeah, in the very beginning, we had a couple people just again thanking Officer Martin, letting him know um they're going to miss him. Um, we had somebody ask about the townspeople used to vote on a new police cruiser at town meeting. When did this process change back to the selectmen? I did respond to Joan and let her know that the police cruisers are included in the operating budget, which is why um they're not on the warrant and why the selectmen are dealing with them. Um, we had someone ask, I, I believe this is in reference to the Jake brakes. I would think that um that is coming from the truck slowing on the intersection coming off of two oh two. Why would they be using them on flat ground in front of the campground? Um, again, speaking about the Jake brakes, um, there's been complaints in, uh, reference Main Street. It's horrible. Um. And then the one I just had from Allison is what I'm seeing.
So there's one, uh, one from another, yeah, and from another party about the swap shop asking not closing, asking us not to close it for the winter.
Okay.
They have a run at them.
Um, they're advising um in their message to hire someone to run it on Sundays. Tons of items will be thrown in the hopper and not recycled.
Any other public comments?
Um, if there's anybody on the call who would like to make a public comment, um, you can, can they unmute themselves, Joe?
They cannot, but they can put their hand up and we can unmute them.
Anyone, anyone? Not seeing any comments. We'll close down the public commentary. Uh, item, Joan, do you have something? No, okay. Uh, we're going to enter into non-public RSA ninety-one, colon, three, two, A.
We don't, we don't have to, right?
No, we're good.
We already did it, Chris.
Yep, we're good.
Uh, well, we had some work we had to work on.
Oh, yeah.
So at this point in time, we'd like to thank all of the members of the audience for participating. So at this point in time, we'd like to thank all of the members of the audience for participating. And thank you very much, everybody. And Joe, how do we do that?
So Joe can send us another link, I guess, right?
I can, yes.
Or, yeah.
Yeah.
Bye, Joe.
So if you just want to shoot us another link, Joe?
Yep. Am I in on this?
Yep.
Okay.
So we should leave this?
I can, I can remove everybody from this, and then we just don't let anybody into the waiting room.
Well, I think everybody else is already logged off, right?
It looks that way, yeah. So I'm just going to end it and check your email first.
Okay, thanks.